We're muted at the moment, just because I normally don't get the audios starting right until there you're ready to go.
Yeah, are you, are you ready? We've still got a few minutes.
So we shouldn't do this?
Right. I'll just, since Jeanne's online, I'll leave her, I'll leave it running, but you can just start it.
Your discussion. Okay, thanks. Hey, Chief.
How goes looking from here?
It's good.
That is so nice. It's like a big city.
That's right.
Chicken salad. Like I said, I meant to eat lunch today, but I was too busy.
It's never happened to me in my entire life. Never.
Do you get a break or you have?
Oh, worst, I'm in the room.
No.
But, um, every time I got out of the chair today, the phone would ring or the radio would go off. I was like, hold on, I'm not gonna take my butt out of the chair because literally that's the problem.
It's all getting firefired, you're cheap like, or you're always on doing.
Well, you know, I mean, we work like a ton of shift, you don't have any breaks or anything, but we just.
That doesn't seem very healthy.
You time it right, yeah, but we have down, like when we have down, then we have a lot. Like I said, this was two hours today.
That's just.
There are times.
Oh, today I was like, just going out with all the people today.
Well, it is 5:30 and I want to welcome everybody to the work session for the City of Idaho Springs for April 28th, 2025. And we've got several things on our work session. And I would like to kick it off with the very first item, Flags on Colorado Boulevard and Blue Star Memorial Highway. Please, welcome up.
Thank you.
Jenny, do you happen to hear us okay? Okay, yeah.
So I'm Troy Erickson, I know most of you veteran service officer for the county and both part of the Quikly County Better Coalition. We've been putting flags up along Colorado Boulevard for a long time, probably over 15 years maybe. A part of our goal, I try to write it up as succinctly as possible, but part of our goal within the veteran services is to get younger veterans to start coming out and see what benefits they're entitled to. They don't want to come to a government office. They're leery of everything, they don't want to come to meetings. So we came up with the idea, as well as recognizing Colorado Boulevard as a Blue Star Memorial Highway. So trying to recognize that, we came up with the idea of on the branch's birthdays, we would get those veterans to come out and put their branch flag up and take it down that night. And then change it back over for the next, whenever the next holiday on our schedule is gonna be. So it'd come at no cost to the city. We want to obviously post something on social media so you don't start taking calls like, what's going on? What happened that the army, because the army will be the first birthday, why are the army flags out? And those kind of things, just kind of promote that. But again, just get those younger veterans, or any veteran from any era that wants to come out and be a part of that, just to build up coming on. And that's just kind of bit in the nutshell, really just a.
Do you ask for this every year?
No, this is a first.
Is this a person that's something that you got, you think you're gonna be doing ongoing?
Yes, a few folks give us the permission and I, I think what'll happen is our first year might be a little bumpy because as we try to get the word out to those veterans, there may be a branch that doesn't get taken care of unless a bunch of other folks want to step up and say, let's just get it done. Because that will also trigger people, oh, I didn't realize it was our birthday. Be funny how many veterans don't know when their birthday is.
Gotcha.
And I'll break that up very much, so.
Well, let's open it up, questions for Troy?
Okay, I don't have any questions for Troy, I think he's done a great job with the flags over the years. All I was gonna say is, this seems like a very simple thing to make as an administrative thing on our calendar, so that Troy doesn't have to waste his time coming to us, because he can work with you guys directly and say, this is the day that we'd like to start doing this and this is our calendar for the year. And it's non-changing, so the birthday stays the same, so that it seems very simple that we could have that as part of our social media account.
And that, and that list is on the sheet I sent.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have it right here.
Okay, perfect, yep, those are all the dates.
It seems like solution, you know, do this every, every year. Lisa?
Andy, you know, you're asking for any funds from the city? This is kind of, okay, this is kind of a bring your own, seriously.
All right, Jeremy, your thoughts?
No issue.
All right, Scott?
I'm late to the party, but that doesn't seem like a number either to me.
Yeah, and, and you know, full confession, Troy actually has coached the city on flag etiquette and really is very, very helpful. I know none of us want to do anything that's disrespectful, but you know, sometimes it, it pays to have somebody looking out for you, you know, like, hey, by the way, did you know we were gonna have Flags half-staff tomorrow and, and these type of things? So lighting of flags and, and other things Troy has been very, very helpful with. Can't think of a better person to bring this forward. And I, I would, would have to think that this would be unanimous. This is, there's no cost here. I wanted to check in with Jeanne, sorry, your thoughts.
There was, there was just a part about attaching a flagpole to the base of the Blue Star Memorial Highway sign, is that like more involved, I guess? Or what does that look like?
So it's very similar to the lamp posts, so it's just a, like a pipe clamp that just goes around that and tightens upon itself.
Oh, okay, thank you, I'm all good, sounds like a good plan.
Right, thank you. But Troy, thank you very much for bringing this forward and, you know, I, I think that it's a great proposal. I, I can't imagine why anybody would want to see this be a continuing thing that we could all be proud of.
Thank you.
And thank you for taking this on.
Yeah, it's a team, I just get to be their representative.
Yes, but there's always has to be a bus driver, so I have to drive the bus.
He does drive the bus too.
Thank you, Troy, I think that was pretty easy.
Okay, I like that.
Troy, are you thinking maybe of doing a news release on this?
Yes, I want to make sure you folks will be able to say yes first, and then we have our coalition meeting this Thursday. I'm sorry, it's sort of back to them that you all would say yes, and then we'll put something together, run it by you to make sure it's a pop here.
Great.
I think there'll be a lot of interest in it, I think folks who are interested would read about it and say, okay.
Let's get behind it, that would be good. Thank you, all right, thank you much.
Next up, I have to say, we have had a great 25-page report on the historic sites and facilities plan. I thought it was really well done, I've got it twice in my packet, I don't know about you, but fellows, please, come on up. Welcome, welcome. And I would just like to start off by think, by saying, it clearly is a very doable plan, I didn't see.
That was our goal.
And I'll, I'll give you an example. The signage was probably the most common thing there with the historic sites. And, you know, it, it isn't that expensive. And for us to plan on that in 2025 and commit some installing sign in 2026 is, is a pretty, pretty easy thing for us to do. But that, that was a good example, I, I think it was well thought out.
We did give that kind of thing some thought.
Sorry.
As it says in the plan, it was a group effort. Previously, before we were an official board, I wrote the preservation plans and then the rest of the committee said, yeah, that was okay. This year, we split it up, I did some properties, each member wrote up the section, so it was a joint effort. And we probably could have managed, but it wouldn't have been nearly as easy without Dylan.
Oh, oh, yeah.
So he gets kudos on this as well. And the memo that you have in your packet that he wrote about this, I think makes the case and hopefully addresses any questions, but if there are others, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, very good, well, we'll go around and Scott, I will start with you. No, no questions for Phyllis?
Wouldn't you agree that's better than the ones we did in the past?
Oh, yeah, more detail.
And, and you know, as far as the detail goes, I will say, there's probably at, at least a few of us that learned additional details about some of these historic sites, you know, particularly with the dates. Very, very interesting. And Jeremy, any questions for Phyllis?
Well, it's just nice to see a plan that has everything in it for.
Yeah. I thought, yeah, I thought it was very well done. Lisa?
No, this is what I'm glad to see is because, and I'm glad to see that it goes out through 2028 because I think regular maintenance, which it mentions in the report, regularly eyeballing our various sites is going to help them not be such big, huge things.
Yeah, well, and I think one thing that was pointed out in this report, there certainly are things we can do today to save us big bucks down the road. You know, as, as a, you know, a great example is what, what goes on with the library and the water damage. You know, you, yeah, you know, you could save a few bucks this year and ignore it or put a little quick band-aid on it and then it ends up, you know, being a six-figure kind of a, a water restoration down the road.
Well, overall, looking at all of the property, most of the big projects, with the notable exception of the train, are already done, so we are approaching a regular maintenance. And while the water leak at the library is not routine maintenance, that was a specific incident, the front doors are. And painting of the trim around the windows and all that kind of stuff. So it's already down to probably what can be managed out of just the regular budget without the, again, stress again, without the, with the notable exception of the train and its shelter and moving it and everything that's involved with that.
Jeanne, any questions for Phyllis?
Yeah, what is the plan for like implementation accountability of the plan? Like will the board look at it every meeting or how do you kind of coordinate actually getting the work that needs to get done and make sure you're on track?
You can't make sure the work gets done with the, that's.
That's Jeanne, sorry.
Jeanne, I'm sorry. We don't know each other that well. No excuse, but we can't make sure that things happen, our function is to recommend. So it would be, I guess ultimately to Andy and perhaps coming down from council to make sure that those things get done. I, we need quarterly, which I might say is a good choice, but it makes it tough to approve minutes. Remember what you said three months ago at a meeting? But I don't think we'll be looking at it every time, hopefully as decisions are made or the city, they're ready to do whatever the next project is, we'll be involved. Again, to use the train as an example, you looked at draft architectural plan. You all choked over the cost, understandably, and when the plans come back and you want to reconsider it, hopefully we'll be involved and we'll be able to have input, but beyond that, I think it's closer to 2028 and it's time to start working on the next version, which would go through maybe, goodness heavens, 31 or 32, something like that. 20, 33, whatever. Then it will be paying much closer attention.
Yeah, I also wanted to chime in, Phyllis and I had talked before the meeting and, you know, we both agree that probably the biggest thing you don't want to see is for us to say, oh, that looks great, thanks for the report, and it gets shelved. You know, so I think as long as we stay on this, you know, and, and keep, keep making progress on this, I, I think we can hold our heads high and know that we've done what, what the budget allowed and, and we weren't just shelving the, the plan.
Thank you.
I think at least in the, so, go ahead. I think at least in the interim, like at our next meeting, we're already planning addition, additional signage design conversation. We in fact in April started that conversation. So at least as far as getting off the ground with it, implementation, I think the board is off to a good start and it's just maintaining momentum.
Yeah.
The next, yeah, the next thing will be to look at signage and then recommendations for you all to approve the money or to approve grant applications or whatever is necessary.
And I, I have more of a comment, not a question, but this is a great starting point, the great report. And if we didn't have this committee, I think this puts a lot on Paul's shoulders, I think.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
He's got enough to worry about as is, and then this kind of falls through the cracks. So this committee is huge in helping us keep these properties and figuring out what priorities. I think we need to prioritize and then we have a budget every year. And between prioritizing what needs to be done first versus what budget we have, that's how the city and the committee have to come together and decide what do we have budget for and what's most important. But that's some of the gap that, that's where we lost it before. So we need to make sure that part stays tied together between the committee and the city and decide which items are on the agenda for that year.
Agreed.
And we, you know, we'd recommend it, when, when you look at that schedule, this is going to be done in '25, '26, and what will be done when? That's our, again, that's our recommendation, that's the plan, it's not the fact. So if something comes wrong, some kind of catastrophic event or something like that, it doesn't mean that because this certain project isn't supposed to be done till 2027 doesn't mean it couldn't be done and shouldn't maybe be done soon, budget allowing. So while I'm sure that administrative staff will be looking at this, I hope every year for budgetary reasons, you can be assured as I've, as I've gotten to know our committee as a whole better, I think they're, we're all going to be watchdogging too. Hey, weren't they supposed to be doing this yet this year? And then coming to our next meeting and laying it on Dylan to pass it along, because he's our point man.
That's what we need though, like I.
Yeah, we do.
We absolutely need that because while this is one of my pet, you know, soapbox issues, historic preservation, there's a lot else that's going on. So an organization that is just focused on this and hey, it's time for our quarterly, you know, maintenance is important.
And Kate, I wanted to ask, did you have any questions for Phyllis?
I don't, I think the, I think the structures are in good hands.
All right, very good. Staff, any questions or further direction?
So all I will note is that there is a resolution on the.
Oh, yes, for tonight.
Tonight, or potential adoption.
I do have a question for Dylan, with all the signage you needed, is that something maybe we could roll into a grant? For like wayfinding, can I know that we're looking at wayfinding for downtown? Can we potentially roll some wayfinding for our historic sites into that?
That, that would make sense.
That, I think it's potentially a good idea, obviously historic signage would be, you could look and feel different, but if we can get funding that, a funding source to help construct it, board might disagree, but.
What, what we have done, as you know, many of the buildings like this one have those big brass plaques. What, what we have, as you know, many of the buildings like this one have those big brass plaques. And so the task, we divided the properties at our meeting earlier this month. And all of us looking at signage for the same properties we did in the plan. Look at that, what's already there. If it's adequate, then what we want is something. And we haven't decided on what we'll recommend, but something that indicates this is an Idaho Springs historic site. And maybe it's just those words. Or maybe it's the city seal and those words or whatever. So like here, where there's the brass plaque, we would look for another smaller brass plaque come out right above it, just to point out the importance.
Though, one good point would be like wayfinding to get people to some of these lesser visibility sites, like the powder house, like the water wheel park, like
The Jackson Mon.
Monument.
Yep.
That I think would be incredible.
And also, this might be going outside of the scope, and if it is, tell me. If we had a logo that indicates this is an Idaho, because I like that idea. This is an Idaho Springs historic site. Do we put the city seal? Do we make something that denotes this is not in Colorado, not Krieger, but Idaho Springs?
Yeah, and in the report, you probably noticed it's recommended that we have consistent signage, you know, amongst all of the sites. And I, I don't know how we, you know, we do it, but
We have a high seal.
If there's a way that we could have a method for people to be able to do further research, you know, for example, I think that would really be beneficial.
We did talk about having, what's it called again, Dylan? I can queue our code?
Yeah.
And we looked just quickly about printing those on metal and they are available. So Dylan and Wonder are supposed to be looking into how those work and I mean, it sounds great to say how it would work. I haven't the biggest idea.
Right. I've seen, I've found some signage that it would probably be like the inverse of our brass plaque. So instead of it being dark with the brass and gloss, I guess it would be opposite. So it'd be light colored and QR code could be printed on. So so metal and complements it. The only concern that Wonder and I brought up is, well, what have, like, whatever we directed to, that website needs to stay the same and not like become a dead link or something. Five hundred dollars or whatever.
Can we put it on our website?
We, cert, yeah, I think that would probably make sense.
That's where I would like to see it.
And we would just create a page for each site. Or just a page that has all the sites and it's the same QR code.
Extra high bones, yeah.
So, so that potentially would work because presumably we're not going to give up our webpage. But I guess if, if we said, oh, well, what if in the future we don't want to be IdahoSpringCO.com anymore because it's a little bit mouthful, you know, CO.com. At one meeting, when I started, someone had said, maybe we update it to have a .gov site. That might
And you just link that site. It goes to that site. It has a link to the new site, whatever. It still works.
So you could potentially get around to that. Yeah. So I think there's an option for sure.
All right. Anything further for Phyllis, either here or online? All right, Phyllis. Phyllis, I wanted to say thank you so much. A lot of good effort. And just a really fine report. I say thank you on behalf of all city councils.
It is mentioned at the end of the report. When we first started this, one of the things that Dylan threw out and we were all just throwing things out that day was putting this report on the website.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that is.
And you do have it in PDF format, so that should be simple. So that will help as well, I think.
All right. Excellent. Excellent suggestion. Phyllis, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
The labor of
Tell all your committee thank you too. Go now, we can see it all.
I was hoping more of them would be here. I was hoping any of them would be here.
All right. And Dylan, you're up for our next one. Dwelling efficiency units, proposed code amendment?
Yes, so this is on the regular meeting and the potential first reading item. And for a little bit of history on how we got to purpose of this code amendment, it, it dates back to when we were talking about extended stay lodging and kind of, well, that works for hotels that are operating as long-term stays, you know, a dwelling unit works well for dwelling units that are a single-family home or two-bedroom apartment, whatever. But what about this mill ground that someone might want to do in the future for a hotel or might want to build a brand-new thing that, you know, because it's too expensive to build dwelling units, maybe they can do something slightly less, but that still needs building code and all this. And so looking at it, it was actually Nick and Carmen kind of determined, well, we do have an existing definition of a dwelling efficiency unit in the code. How, and it, you know, that definition states it's a dwelling unit containing not more than one room or enclosed floor space arranged for living, eating and sleeping purposes, and then it keeps going on. But we don't actually allow it as used by right in any zone district technically. So if you were going to just do efficiency units, there may be a complicated process to do so. And so they basically said, why don't we just add it to all the zone districts where multifamily housing is allowed, which is RM, R three, C one and C two. And then if we do get, you know, somebody wants to convert their existing space into this sort of use or build a brand-new thing, maybe there's a unique creative solution, you know, we haven't, this hasn't been a heavy lift to eventually allow that to happen. And so what this would not do is like define any specific standards that don't already exist. For example, in the code, right now, it says that studio apartments and efficiency units have to be a minimum of four hundred square feet, which is quite large for some of these spaces, but it's a step in the right direction for kind of eliminating red tape, I guess, you know, because if you're building a brand-new thing, maybe you can figure out a way to make it more than square feet, or you could come in and get a variance or something like that to create smaller units. Or as we build off of additional housing, we update that section of code to better fit with state affordable housing requirements. As we got it, so that was initially the original thing, like let's just add it there and then we don't, you know, we've kind of made a very easy switch. But then chatting about it more with Safebuilt as building official, they said, well, per building code, if you're doing this, we need some sort of fixed cooking facilities in the room. And we were kind of like, well, what does that mean? And so if you wanted to build a dwelling efficiency, essentially what it means is you would have to have an area that kind of allows for preparation, cooking of food. And the key thing with that would be some sort of fixed cooktop. It doesn't have to be a range and stove.
Right.
With a two-twenty volt or gas line, it could be like a built-in cooker on top. Yeah, it could be something like that. But the other key thing is that I would have to have a sink. Because
Right, other than bathroom.
Yeah, because that's the thing with building code where they say, well, if you're
It's an ADU or what, what, it's basically a studio apartment.
Yeah, functionally, but you know, with the way our, like a studio apartment would be considered this, I suppose. So you could build a studio apartment that didn't have a full kitchen. It would be more like a little kitchenette, I guess, is the big difference. So
But there are studio apartments efficiencies that are under four hundred feet.
Yeah, and and actually, Lisa, I'm glad you brought that up. I'm sure Dylan is already aware of this. The four hundred square foot language is in HUD. And frankly, they don't set the bar very high. For example, the minimum width of a bedroom is seven foot one. Gee, you know, that's still pretty tight. And as far as the four hundred square foot goes, there's a little qualifier in there. If you read, it said that HUD will look at different layouts, provided that you meet the minimum compliance. And they have things like you must have thirty inches in front of a stove. You must have twenty-one inches in front of a a toilet and the seven-foot one, for example, you know, on a bedroom. So you are right. It is possible actually to lay it out and still meet HUD compliance and be under four hundred square feet. So they, they do openly admit that.
Well, and I have some concern about our minimum square footages in general. And we didn't include it in the ordinance ultimately, but I do think it's worth discussion is, for example, we require, worth just quickly filling that. Minimum gross floor area, so. So basically, if you're a single-family home, you have to build eight hundred and fifty square feet for code right now, which feels like with some of our tiny lots. If someone wants to build five hundred and fifty square foot, single-family home on a detached lot, is that really hurting anyone, you know, and it needs building code and all of this.
Or, or does we have that existing even right here behind us?
Right. So thinking about things like that and thinking about, well, does it really make sense that you know, some of these do make sense, like a three-bedroom apartment, it says has to be nine hundred square feet. You say maybe that's reusable. What would you want to make it? You know, I had put together like a kind of a review of some other places and we're sort of in the fall park for all of these things, except for for these studio apartments were like way over what would typically be seen as like the minimum if people require a minimum. So we didn't include it in this because kind of seems like that might be worth a larger discussion about housing in general. But it's something that maybe is worth looking into if we want to actually encourage these things.
I'd certainly be willing to compromise on the size of square footage, as long as the kitchen was something more fully developed than just, you know, this size sink is not big enough to clean things effectively. And if you're only doing maybe two burner and a small oven and an apartment-sized refrigerator, you're still taking up about this size of a table. So it's still a legitimately large amount of, you know, so that's why I think the square footage has to be there. But to me, if we're, if this is something that we want to allow, we do have to make them livable units. I mean, I've lived in a small apartment, like I'm sure everybody in this room has at one point or another, whether that's sustainable for a long time. I mean, we're not talking about month-to-month. We're talking about people who are going to live in these things. So I think that should be where the requirements, we, we don't, we don't minimize the need for that in someone's life.
Well, my other concern is that, and I brought this up when we had the planning commission with this. If we don't have minimum standards for people, people are going to do what they want. Like, you know, everybody here that has lived in an apartment knows that your landlord is not all up in your face twenty-four, seven. So when they say, oh, don't plug, don't have this kind of mic, you know, like, I don't care what kind of microwave I have. And what happens? We'll fire because you're exceeding the electrical usage ability. So I feel like we have to, you know, reasonable with this. And I kind of go along with you. We have these tiny little lots. You can do a five hundred square foot family home. I mean, have you guys looked at the New York apartments lately? Like seriously, four hundred square feet is for a studio is huge.
Yeah, right.
Those are like two to three hundred square feet.
But we can maintain the interior dimensions that are required for them to allow them to build a smaller unit. It's becoming affordability thing with a lot of people. So by telling them they have to build eight hundred and fifty, it might be a higher affordability rate.
Right.
And just a fact because people can only afford so much.
And actually, Scott, when, when you think about the alternative, like you can have wasteful things, like a hall. And say, oh, but it's four hundred square feet, but it's not as usable as a three hundred and fifty, but you didn't have a hallway.
The, I think the key thing, when I think about this, what it kind of achieves is it gives people something that they can say, I could build this. But it also gives the city the ability to say, all right, but let's say you're an existing single-family home that you want, that's, you know, near the senior housing there, that zones commercial, like you could convert to multi-family because that's allowed in that zone district. What it would require is you say, all right, well, we do have this space that you could convert into. If it's a change of use from single-family to efficiency units, which means you have to make sure that like your electrical system is up to code and you have unit-to-unit separation and things like that. So it gives the city the ability to make sure that you're not just taking a single-family home and putting up non-load-bearing walls and creating four units. You're instead
What do you mean, like broad?
Putting that separation. Yeah, yeah, like in that situation, let's say you could create, you know, six or seven units of what used to be, you know, that historic hotel or a historic single-family home from the early nineteen hundreds, but it would require you to bring it up to the building code for this
Absolutely.
residential type of use.
Yeah, like, like egress windows and
Right. So in that way, you know, as it stands now, you have this minimum square footage and you have to be building code, but you don't have to, you know, make it a full-fledged dwelling unit for whatever slight differences that involves. It reduces costs a little bit.
Yeah. So in this change, you're changing from eating to cooking.
Oh, the, yeah, and I think planning commission kind of brought that on after they talked, well, after I talked with Safebuilt and they said, well, planning commission's concerned with the word eating is they're like, well, what if you just throw a tape, you know, a kitchen table next to
That's eating.
Whatever, that's an eating, like what's an eating space? Like if you say it's a cooking space, then it aligns kind of with how building code defines spaces. And so that was their one change to the definition.
And this applies to all dwelling units outside of the hotels? This would apply to the units that I have or is this new construction or?
I would, I don't know. There's a few spots that I guess probably are like those units that you have where it's a use that's been in place for quite a long time. It would certainly apply to anyone who wanted to do that, do a use like this in the future, right? I know at that joint work session, Nick had sort of said, well, you know, the extended stay doesn't apply because you're an existing being that doesn't meet the definition of the hotel. I, I would guess since you're an existing use that
I, I'm going to say the optics on that are going to be extremely negative, like one hundred percent, Scott. And you know that's not going to be, look that kindly. So I don't know.
That's what I'm thinking. If it are of our best interest, we would probably look at the possibility of putting an eating, common eating area like a hotel.
Yeah.
But now are we classified differently, you know?
Well, I mean, that, that would be a definite compromise, like, because if, there might be other places in town that would like that. Each, let's just say each unit has their own locked closet, right? And whatever their personal stuff could be in there. So it doesn't have to be in their actual room or whatever setup makes sense. I mean, I think that would be a decent compromise.
Yeah. And I know it's a upgrade, but to be honest with you, we're getting feedback is like, I don't want to go in a kitchen that somebody else is using that they don't clean it up. But then I go in, I don't, I don't want to use that.
Can't eat or please.
I feel that.
Flat out.
I feel that one hundred percent.
I will say this to you only because I've lived in small spaces. Like you can go to Ikea and they have a kitchen that has a sink, a split, a place for a stove, and it's literally this big.
Yeah, they sell thirty, there are thirty-inch ones.
You know, and you have a space to shut, like they could get, you could get their own refrigerator, which is what a lot of people do.
I'm just saying, as, as this evolved, I think that would be a compromise that maybe we should research with the city on my personal behalf, but.
And I think as we get into housing, that isn't just a single-family home or an apartment or duplex, it gets complicated very quickly.
And grandfathered in versus one that's a new build and
If you grandfather everything in, I agree with Kate, the optics are bad. I mean, I have a tiny little studio. My studio has a sleeping area, an eating area and a bathroom area, but they are all clearly separated.
Sorry. The, what the other wording, none of that was grandfathered in. They're all being asked to get into compliance. So applying that same standard, if we pass something else, I think the standard is everyone get into compliance. Is that, is what we're asking? Sorry, that's, that's just how I'm seeing it.
That's true. I mean, that's hundred percent true. It's a matter of two. You take existing units, you got to give them a time period like you gave for all the time.
Sure. And we, and we've talked about that.
But we did, we talked about they, like, there was a long period. Like you have until the end of the year to file with the city, you know, to start getting in compliance.
Right, right. And we, I, I think the original one was a pretty short timing. And you, you said that that's just not going to work. And I agree, I mean, you can't throw that, that bill at somebody and say this is going to happen.
And I'm bringing reality into this. You have two concerns, it's health and safety. And you have affordability. And affordability for people right now is incredibly
Right now it's fine.
I'm telling you, I've, I've seen it. People are not making it. And this is forcing people on the affordability range that, I don't know, there's a few people that might be homeless, you know?
Well, and, you know, my goal in all of this is not to say, how do we regulate, how do we like stick it to or regulate? Well, and you know, my goal in all of this is not to say, how do we regulate, how do we like stick it to or regulate those. Places that don't cleanly fit somewhere, like my goal is more like we've identified. This potential issue that could come up again in the future if, you know, folks aren't on top of it and we've. You could close the potential loophole for people in the future, though I will say like today if. One of the hotels on the east end that still is a hotel said, hey, I want to convert to all. From lodging, you'd say, well, you could do the extended stay hotel ordinance, you're still a hotel. But you have to comply with these standards, or if you're like, you wanna create long term housing that meets this definition, then you have to go this path and. So it doesn't necessarily, like, this would not be the cheaper path for any existing hotels, but it would be a path for. Other existing units that aren't hotels or for people in the future who said, I wanna build these things that are cheaper.
Very, very important.
That, that's Scott's comment, so. We don't usually get into national politics at these kind of meetings, and what, and what you're saying is you're, you're making an alarmist statement that is probably gonna come true. And first of all, I want to be very clear, I don't wanna say anybody homeless, but the state of affairs is this. The things that are happening nationally are affecting everybody locally, and the only way that that. Tide is gonna turn, that we care about people that are on the fringe, is that some pain is obvious, and unfortunately. This is where we're at, as a city, I can't say to you, you gotta do the right thing, nor can you ask us as a fellow council members. We're gonna bend the rules just for you and for this, because. All that does is degrade the entire system, if we keep falling back that this is the lowest that will go, and then tomorrow we go lower. From what the, the living expectation.
I, I agree, the city sets the bar. And, you know, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not getting silly, but I'm just saying, uh, for some municipalities. It is allowing people to live in their cars, as we see over here in Frisco, just give you a close neighbor example.
We're gonna see more of that thing.
And, um, you know, other, others and you say, well, we're, we're going to have minimums and. I saw of, of, there's been a large number of motel in Polfax in particular. Where every third unit was taken out, so that they can enlarge. Two of the units right on either side to have kitchens. Would that have affected the affordability? Absolutely, it had to, you know, when you're taking a third of the units out. But they felt that we're gonna set a, a minimum standard. And, uh, so I, 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 I know what you're saying, it's, it's a tough balancing act.
It's unfortunate what it is.
Let me make one thing absolutely clear, is I am not asking for a favor. Because I sit in this seat, I wanna make that completely clear.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that you are, I'm just saying, like, you know, obviously the optics are that you're on both sides of it.
Exactly. What this brings, and I think it's a hard balancing act too, because I see people that could use some government assistance. And then I look at some people, how they act and how they proceed with their lives, if it's drugs, whatever. I think they don't deserve the government helping them, so, I mean, I see both sides of that too.
I would think we all do.
A, a hardworking individual that's barely making it, a single mom or something that has a kid. And they're out there busting their butt and the government could help them, yeah. But somebody that runs a lifestyle that I don't agree with, and it's like they're asking for a handout, I don't agree with the government helping those people.
I, I, I didn't say anything about how the government helps, I'm telling you that, that the tariffs and, and the lack of money going to, to. Individuals that do need it, and I've always said this, I believe that you should work for welfare, I should believe that you should participate in the programs that are benefiting you. I'm just saying that that is a swiped off the board and this is gonna happen, it's happening in our little town, it's gonna happen nationally, and the only way it will change. Is that it hurts for a while, and unfortunately, it is not gonna hurt me. And, and, but I will realize that it will hurt people that I know, right?
A lot of middle class and lower class, I think are being affected not only policies, but just because inflation, inflation that's happening. Inflation is out of control, I mean, it's under control right now, but who knows where it's going in the near future.
Go to the stores and you can see that people are in a panic.
But it's been a problem over the last year and a half, so.
Jeremy, you have been a very patient, and I just wanna say, I'd very much like to hear, uh, you weigh in on this.
This is good, this gets sticky in what you're allowed to, what you're allowed to waive. Because we did formally adopt building code and part of code and residential code. And as adopted, we're, we're kinda in a corner to a certain degree, we have very little allowed to.
Am I correct?
Well, there is, but it's how you adopt it, so we currently have code adopted almost in its entirety. Which, that sets the legal precedent for how we have to enforce it, and what ordinance we can pass.
I think that was unanimous, wasn't it?
But yeah, within the rules, right? And can we adjust twenty-one code? Or, or twenty-two or code, which is actually out now? Yeah, we can adjust stuff, and, and that's what both cities have done, but as it's adopted today, we have very little leeway in. When you get into this, what we can and can't do. And then some of that's, Safe Bill's interpretation is. A little bit more on the extreme side than mine.
He's, they're downtown for sure, they're, they're definitely in Denver.
Well, no, they're, they're, they're decently.
No, I know they are, but when they're looking at a mountain town like ours, that is structurally a hundred and fifty years old.
They're very risk averse, from a code official perspective, they're gonna go the high side.
I, I, yeah.
Of the code, right, wrong, or different, and I would maybe, I would interpret it differently than they do most time. I think there's, there's the spirit of the code and there's.
The reality of.
That's kinda what sets the parameters for this from a legal perspective is. But is there an opportunity for us to change future code adoption? So this, I think this is more of an opportunity for us to redirect the definition now. And with the goal, we worked on future code, we, we work in the things that we wanna see within town, within those codes to be incorporated into that code.
And certainly I would say if there's things that we would want to incorporate into this now to clarify anything, then. The direction I obviously could.
Yeah, and Dylan, you did ask, uh, for a direction, if there was something that you felt, uh. Since it is up for adoption tonight, if there's something a council would be more comfortable, uh, changing, I, I personally like. The way it's laid out right now, uh, in this presentation.
I was just gonna say, with the four hundred square feet, like, if that's something we know we're gonna change, I mean, is it worth waiting, is it worth? Making it lower, I don't know, just knowing that we're gonna do this and then maybe change it again, and I understand it has to be a bigger conversation, but I was just. Wondering if we need to do that.
Yeah, the only thing I would say on that would be. I think that's a very valid question for especially new builds, for existing buildings. I, I would think there would be a, potentially an opportunity for a variance from the square footage size, would you say, let's.
Oh, sure.
Let's apply for a variance and then I'm.
For, you're talking about existing, not, and, and again, I think we can compromise on the size going forward for even new builds.
Yeah, as long as you mean all the safety requirements. There's, there's a caveat. That you meet these key things and you can qualify, and you try to bring to a good point, if, if we're talking HUD funding. There's, there's not that much leeway in the. Like you must have a real foundation and a whole bunch of rules that go into HUD funding, but most of the stuff we're talking about isn't. Only isn't HUD anymore, it's, it's other, it's rentals, let's be honest. We're not talking about, can I get a mortgage on this, it's, we're talking about, can I rent this to, to the people that need housing? And that's what we're talking about, so I think. We've got opportunity to change things in the, in the future, like go under the HUD four hundred square feet, which is in a bunch of different. Places, especially residential code.
Would you wanna do that now?
I think this as it is, it is, that should be, that's a separate section of the code, isn't it?
Yeah, it's still in section twenty, chapter twenty-one.
But it's a different.
It's, it's under our minimum gross floor area, which is twenty-one sixty-one, so this one would only change twenty-one fifty and then.
It's a different section, so I think we, we changed code and, and we deal with this section, your first reading. I was gonna take some time and delve into the code a little bit on this, I just got tied up with other projects. Um, now in the second reading, I think we can do that, and then if we wanna change the four hundred square feet, I think that's something we. We change that definition section of minimum square footage, and maybe that's across the board. Maybe it's not just this one, it's, if we adjust all of them.
Just make it easier.
To be more attractive to be able to, to build housing within the community, which is our driving goal. That might be a separate discussion, but it should be a separate project.
Is this the thing where you, where you insert how many people can live in one of these units?
I don't think the law, well, I don't think the statute will allow it, yeah, we had to change our family definition to say like. Basically, whatever building allows a fire code.
Two people per bedroom and minimum square footage.
Two people.
If you get into the life safety code, which is where that comes from.
Now, I think four hundred square feet is really small for two people, like, I don't know, you'd murder each other, yeah, like you would kill, there's nowhere to go, but. Clean sized bed.
For a single person, it's ideal, right, and that's, that's the population that we're talking about, I think Scott's a perfect example of that. Most people that live in his, in his business. There are single people if you're working projects in long term or short term, working for CDO, whatever it is. They just want places, and I spent a lot of my career in the same stuff, staying in hotels, which is just, you, just weren't gonna do it. Pretty forty days a pop on different projects.
I did it for five months out of the year, straight, yeah.
Right, so I think that's, that's sort of the opportunity of that. Maybe it's not two hundred, maybe it's three hundred square feet, you know, which is fifteen by twenty, makes sense for single, the lower by a hundred square feet in the future. Single, single product.
But that's twenty-one sixty, this is, this is, that's not this particular.
That's a, that's like two paragraphs down in there, but.
Is life safety your jurisdiction in the fire authority or is that?
Well, we do life safety, we can do life safety of the fire authority, we tend, what we tend to do is have safe builds or whoever our building inspector is, do life safety inspections. That is a separate code, um. Cause technically we can enforce fire code by how we're destined, the designation of the city, if we can do fire code. And there are the other crossovers, because fire code references life safety code, which is kind of rounded out, allows the enforcement, but. We tend to have safe builds or whoever the building official is officially do that because they are the designated. Uh, regulatory enforcement agency for the city. By decree, that's, that's kinda where that gets sticky, so normally we just meet up with them and we do the same inspection at the same time. And we have separate write offs, that's how we did previous inspections last year.
So, just to be clear Dylan, this classifies my units here, this?
Well, I mean, truth be, all this does is allow efficiency units in. These zone districts and clarify what eating versus cooking is, like whether, like the definition. Is eating versus cooking has always been, has existed in the code existing, and so. You may already. I guess if you, if you're qualified under it now, you would have previously, and I would say that if. If those units qualify, even the closest thing they are is you, I guess I would tell what they were originally built as, or. Could be this, but with the caveat that they're smaller and maybe don't have some of those.
Cause that would take way down three hundred or four hundred square feet, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I would guess that. And, and I think like you could, like I said, that's where potentially variance comes in, you say hardship is that. Like we can't comply with this thing. While we need the size, but we'll still need building code otherwise.
Right, and that's not me as a council person, that's me trying to do something for the community in a good way. And not put people out on the street or, I mean, may, if I had to comply with a kitchen in each one, four hundred square feet in each one. I would have to do a major remodel, and if I do a major remodel, Jeremy can attest, I'd have to sprinkle that building. But it's new, and if I have to sprinkle, that's a hundred and fifty thousand just for the sprinkler system. So, that's where it goes, and then I can't rent to those people anymore, I'm renting to a different class of people.
But we, Dylan just said that we could have existing buildings could have a different variance on it, but then going forward. New builds would have a different one, I have been probably.
Existing building code is a, a whole separate code that goes into this whole.
Right, but I do think the issue with that is, is like. I don't know the history of the building really, so I don't know if at some point, when it was converted from short term stays. Long term stays, what that looked like, did it go through a process with the city, or did just one day people just started staying?
We didn't.
Because if that's the case, then depending on what the code was like then, like if you were legal then, I don't think the city could come back and say. Well, now, yeah, you couldn't make it retroactive, but I think if you. Like if you do a change of use, you convert to this residential use without permits and without a change of use, then theoretically. Like this would be, potentially has been a violation for twenty years, and then I don't know how that works.
And then the variance goes in front of which committee, the variance board, right?
So I don't know in this particular case how it would apply, I think if, if I said I'm renting short term now. And I'm the six and forty, because, you know, they're in short term, um. I want to now do exclusively long term, and I wanna be in these efficiency units, it's like, alright, well, you have to be. Because you have to do a change of use, they would instead just do the extended stay, I would guess, and just maintain. Compliance with that, because it's easier, because you're not doing a change of use from like an R one sort of occupancy to an R two or R three or whatever it is.
What's the advantage of having them do like the, the changeover, I don't, I'm not seeing the advantage if we already allow it.
Well, it wouldn't be advantage for them, but it would be an advantage for people who, let's say, like I said, like the example of I own a house on Carl Boulevard, it's zone C one. But like, I wanna just rent it to one family, I wanna to rent it to more families, I can turn it into four efficiency units. And now I have four rentals as opposed to.
But you have to pay the money to be compliant, you gotta, you gotta invest in the property.
From a single family.
I mean, it's not like that easy, but that's what everybody comes back to.
Right, I, I don't know if it still is, but, uh, I was mentioning egress windows, and it's like four and a half square foot. Of, once it's, of free, you know, once it's open, and I would suggest that very, very few homes in our old city. You don't have that ability to offer.
I hope my windows haven't been open.
Yeah, yeah, they're painted shut under ten.
Change the user or modification of fifty percent of this existence. And yeah, you have to do, you have to enter code compliance, so you have to have a different R factor for your windows and. Um, you have to sprinkle it, uh. There's a whole bunch of rules that have to come into that, and that's where it kinda goes down a weird rabbit hole, which is not a good or bad, it's just. Reality, then all these codes come into place and what you can and can't do, and Scott's right on with his cost, it was sixty-five thousand, this is sprinkled. The upstairs section two, fire station, not counting windows and all that, so they had to go into that code compliance because of change of use.
And you're building off an existing sprinkler system.
Right, so we had to abandon and replace with new, so. But it, it does, there's, the code's there for, for a reason. And, but when you go down that path, and then there's a whole bunch of, of things that start happening, like you have to be compliant with this code and this code and this code, nail their link. So I think changing definitions is not a bad thing. But I think this is the start, this is, well, the extended stay was the start. This is the next step, and I think we've got probably twenty more steps we have to do over the next year, year and a half. To get our code and our mini code to match up and actually have the things that we want.
But we also didn't have, like, we didn't have, we had extended stay. And short term, like transient, short term hotel, and we had extended stay up to thirty days, but we didn't have anything that, like, this actually creates. You know, a subcategory within the.
Which we didn't have.
Yeah, which we didn't have.
All this is cleaning up what we didn't have, or we really never had.
Yeah, and it is different than the extended stay, and that extended stay is retroactive because of the new licensing system, like this isn't, you don't get a license to be a dwelling unit. Or an efficiency unit, so in that sense, you know, if I had a. Like a, let's say I was one of the apartment buildings in town and I technically meet this definition, but I was built in nineteen fifty, like, we're not gonna come in and say now you have to. Meet these new standards, like you were approved back. Before this standard existed, so it isn't as backwards facing as the extended stay lodging one was, which. Extended stay lodging, different subject, but has definitely created some unintended. Work on the city side that we're still working out, so we haven't issued any licenses yet, we're still working through some of the kinks. Like what Jeremy mentioned, some of the code staff and safe build being very conservative. So, anyway.
And I'll say, like, piggybacking on Jeremy's statements, I think it's a good thing we're cleaning up some of this language and getting it in order. And I'll say like, piggybacking on Jeremy's statements, I think it's a good thing we're cleaning up some of this language and getting it in order. Scott particularly, uh, in in my view is, uh. New folks coming in wanting maybe to develop, you know, twenty units on a parcel over here and. I'm gonna have it comprise a mere eight thousand square feet. You know, kind of a thing, so it's four hundred square foot. Uh, minimums. I'm just saying, if they they know this going in. It's, uh, I just think a lot cleaner. Cause I know we did have some folks. Uh, inquire when Jonathan King, uh, was here about doing some kind of, uh. I'll call it like, uh.
Forward towards, so.
Right, thank you, Andy. Yes, exactly.
Was that the thing over there at the?
I think it was a big home on the east end.
Well, was it a whole different code compliance?
Right, right, but that is another potential option for housing.
It was there. Yeah.
And I think that is something that.
Boarding houses all of us are calling.
Boarding boarding house. Especially where we are, where there's a significant rafting community in summer and skiing community in the winter, I think that could be a potential thing that we should. Pursue adding it well, so that if someone wants to.
There's a housing turnover, seasonal turnovers.
Right.
Well, there's J ones, so I mean, that's not gonna change. That's gonna, if anything. Have more people that need that type of housing.
You see that too in other towns in Colorado. Where it's apartment with four rooms, but everybody has their own individual lease. Everybody leases the apartment, lease a room. You know, that I think that probably falls under boarding house or.
Yeah, and I don't think it would be a huge leap to go there from something like this. Once we start. Getting a little more creative with housing, you say, well, why not have people lease their room, but they have a big shared kitchen and space or whatever, you know?
A nightmare.
Sharing a kitchen with other people.
It's like ornatory living in a college.
I never did that. I only live with neat people, Scott.
Alright, any, uh, any further, uh? Questions or, uh, or comments? Janine, are you alright online? Good? Okay.
Okay.
Does staff need any further direction?
So there as far as direction, what I'm hearing, this is the first reading of the ordinance tonight. It sounds like, uh, council, the consensus is to move forward with with first reading as written. Of course, there is time, but the first, second reading of the next four weeks. If there are any adjustments or more discussion we want to have, we can certainly arrange that.
Like on the square footage?
Well, that's, this, but that's a different, uh, chapter, that's twenty one sixty of the, so.
And you can change the wording in here, it was four hundred, I think it's in there. I'll use change the wording to reference the actual mini code that lists out the square footage. Take that out and have a reference there and that makes a standard.
That doesn't have to be done tonight.
No, you can, so by changing the reference in this document to reference the other section that lists the minimum square footage. It's kind of clearer that way you're not changing this definition each time. All you're doing is changing up, you change that one section as needed. And this definition stays the same for always reference.
That's a good idea.
I like that. Can the resolution be passed with that amended language? When we get to it?
Um, well, aren't we free to make that change in a second?
So there'll be a second, so we would pass it.
Yeah.
Make any little tweaks. Like I said, I wanted to look at this a little deeper. I just got tied up. Over the weekend and not looking, but I think that's where we just reference this, we reference that.
Yeah.
And that's the clean way to do. What we'll do is once. Yeah, we can make only those.
Any changes that come up, I think.
Alright, um, if there's nothing further, I will move on to, uh. Probably, uh, will be combined into our last item, but it is a parking management agreement update slash parking plan update. Guy, would you like to kick us off or do you want me to? I'm happy either way. Defer to be with them. Alright, um. Tonight, we, um, have, uh, for your, um, approval or disapproval. Um, a thirty day extension to the current agreement with Interstate. We might have been able to have, uh, rushed, uh, this to a conclusion, but I think. It's gonna benefit all parties for us to spend a couple more, a few more weeks chewing on this. And, um, I will just say that. Things are being negotiated. Uh, exactly as we had discussed at our last, uh, council meeting. And that, um. We have every reason to believe that, uh, this will be a successful negotiation. Uh, staying within the parameters of what council discussed, uh, in executive session and, um. Um, that is also going to wrap us into the, uh, the plan update. Will, of course, uh, hinge heavily on the success of this negotiation. And I say the success of this negotiation because we haven't thrown the other parties out. Um, and if for some reason this fails, uh, we certainly, uh, reserve the right to go back. Uh, because as you know, we had narrowed it down to to the our top three. But I am, uh, I'm very, very hopeful that, uh, and I'm pretty confident that this is gonna get to where council, uh, had directed. Guy or Andy, uh, anything further?
Uh, I would add that it didn't appear, uh, the counterparties, there are any poison bills. Um, and everything is a good faith and moving forward.
Yep.
Which is important.
It's just taking longer than you thought to close it off.
Um, I think, I think it's, well, um. They want to take a long look at this. We want to take a long look at it. We want to engage in a period of time. Uh, that's extensive, as we talked about, and it's worth doing the, doing a little bit of lifting now, make sure it's all.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't see any big hurdles. I I just think that, um. They need some clarification on what I consider at least one pretty minor issue. Um, but, uh, it wasn't, you know, worth going to the mat on rushing this and and trying to pressure so that we had it signed this week or something.
Okay.
Um. I think, uh, it's gonna be pretty clean and I I think that there will be. Uh, an agreement that's gonna suit, uh, everybody and 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 be exactly what, uh, council had directed. If we just give it a a couple of weeks.
But I might add that, uh, we do have a good solid agreement, draft of the agreement that we met with, um. Uh, the firm, uh, the top firm and we're negotiating with. And, um, so we have a nice, it's very clear what what is in the scope and in the agreement. And the terms that council, uh, directed us on, so. Um, I think we're at a good place. Uh, that meeting, meeting went well and now, uh, we just, it was a tight timeframe anyhow. And now if we just extend the current agreement one more month, uh, I think it's very likely we'll have an agreement maybe by the next meeting.
Yeah.
But really, we're just waiting to hear back from the firm on any other concerns or other thoughts they have before we finalize the contract with the council.
I think it's enough to give them the. More, more in a shorter form of the contract if we, if we rush it.
Thanks to Guy for putting that together.
Yes, very much. He put, he put a lot of work, uh, in the end of that.
Pulling from the proposal, pulling from some of the things that have been brought up in the in the meetings that we had.
And and certainly, uh, a list of council concerns that needed to be addressed.
Can? Sorry, Chuck, guys.
Oh, I'm done.
I'm, are we, can can I ask a question about something that's in the meeting and I completely, that's in the seven o'clock meeting? And I've completely forgotten the history of it. Is that okay if I ask you, Andy? Or am I jumping ahead?
I I think it'd be alright.
Yeah.
We still have a little more to discuss.
Oh, you have more? Okay. Oh, I thought you had wrote that. Okay, no worries.
So, uh, is that all, uh, end of the agreement update?
Yeah.
Um, on the parking plan, there's nothing in your packet, but, uh, last year we we updated the city's parking plan. We do that periodically. And, uh, we've already talked about this as staff with, um. Uh, needs, uh, things that need to be updated in the parking plan. But I wanted to, uh, just give a little bit of time with council here, work session, before we bring back the, uh, proposed updated parking plan. Wanted to have a little discussion here, uh, about some of your thoughts on things. Uh, one of the biggest, and I I think I know your, uh, thoughts on some of these items already, but again, I thought it'd be helpful just to have a little bit of discussion. Staff is here, uh, as well to, apartment heads are here to to give their thoughts or perspectives, if there's something that 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 they think needs to be changed. Or they, you want to react to something that you share. But I think the overarching big change to the parking plan that we would like to propose and we'll bring it back, uh, for your consideration. Is expanding the parking program, the parking plan citywide. And that's not, and that that's, yes, of course, that would affect managed parking, but really, most of the parking plan that we have. Is focused on the downtown because that's where our parking problems were. And now, uh, you know, it's it's. Good that there is more, um, more spaces are being used on the east end and more activity on the east end. That's what we were hoping for when. Uh, um, Colorado, Colorado Boulevard was was, um, reconstructed. So, um. And so am I correct, that's really the direction the council wants to go? I mean, that's something we talked with in our negotiations with the firm. I think, uh, they're certainly able to expand as well. But, uh, we we just, these go together, the parking management program that we have, but also the city's parking plan, which regulates. You know, where where, you know, what type of parking you have where and that sort of thing. So is that, does that sound right? Point citywide?
Uh, yeah, oh, you're you're talking west end too, so.
West end too, all the whole city.
Yeah, yeah, I mean. Hundred percent.
The whole city.
Oh, by the way, Washington, what is, we have to go, we have city.
Oh, yeah, I would, I think they'll be tweaking up the map when the map starts happening for sure, but yeah, I think I, that's the only way to go forward. And it's.
We have that plan stated for what we're doing down there. The plan on how it's implemented on the east.
And that, and that's what we'll be coming back to you all with. This is just a discussion.
This is a discussion of whether or not we wanted.
To just see if, are we on the right track?
That's part of the negotiations, right?
Well, it is tied into the managed parking, certainly, but we, the parking plan stands on its own as far as, you know, this is a one way street or you can't park on this side of the street and things like that.
I would like to see the whole city addressed in a parking plan, like. I think when we did the downtown, can I remember when that happened and the fights that happened in this room? But I think we've gotten to the point where we have to look at the whole city. Particularly once, I think, the mountain, the mountain park opens, um, consistently. I think we're gonna see people spilling out from all over.
Well, I think we're gonna have bikers parking in residential areas, right?
That's exactly what we're trying to head on.
That's, it's already probably started, I imagine, right?
Yeah, it was starting and then it got.
Not, I don't know, but it's just because I look like crazy old lady when I'm standing outside my house, but no, bikers don't generally park in front of our house.
Yeah, Kate, uh, because, uh, I live just across from the driveway from you.
I wouldn't park in front of your house.
Uh, I have been very paranoid and watched like a hawk on Riverside Drive. I have a great view of Riverside Drive.
Yeah. Is, yeah.
And Virginia Street. As we're, I don't know, as a crow flies eight houses away, Jeremy literally backs right up to it. And I am very happy to say that in the seven weeks Mountain Bike Park was open, I can honestly. Say I didn't even see one single individual violate, uh, that signage.
Yeah, I think we're doing good. We, I think it's placement of our signage that we might want to think about. Already existing signs need to be at a more uniform height. My husband thinks everybody looks up in the sky for our signs, but they do not.
But I think the communication that bikes community got out there is don't throw this up like parking in residential area.
No, mine are attached to our wall.
I I get that, and you know, we've, we've made some concessions. We're trying to get signage out there, but. Any of the street signs that are on our street, on a post, should be, we should have seven feet clearance under it. When we start adding more signs to that stuff, it it becomes a problem.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm literally just saying about our wall. I I get what you're saying, yeah.
No, I I, to go back to what you're saying, I would like to see the whole city addressed, even though people in West End may be like, oh, we're fine.
Not, not forever.
Not forever. I would rather, and and I have heard from people who are downtown, like, when is East End gonna actually have to start doing the paid parking?
Oh, yeah.
You know, they feel like that is a burden that is put on them because they are downtown. Having no opinion on that whatsoever, that is what, that is the perception that our downtown folks are seeing. So, let's see the whole city.
It's fair across the board, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're, we're at that stage. We have enough people visiting town on any given day that we, we have to have some type of managed parking.
I was promised by a former mayor that we would not see this down on the east side.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm a certain former mayor that's had the same conversation, but.
I know a former mayor, because the water rates are gonna go down.
The reality of where we are now with. The Mountain Bike Park was this great, drafting, all all of a sudden we have gone to town, it's all really important stuff. Now we're definitely have to manage parking and if we don't manage the west end, like I grew up on the west end town. And my dad managed parking.
And promptly ran away.
Right, that's the reality of it. Whatever we do, if we don't do it across the entire, within city limits, we're gonna move. Any issues to that neighborhood, that's something that's gonna be an issue for them for the first time. I'd like to just avoid it, just solve it one shot as we can get. But the other question about parking is, when did the new please pay here flags come in? I actually walked through town this week and I've never seen so many people confused on trying to pay for parking.
I have to say, it is kind of confusing for somebody that lives here.
I think it would be too, because I have.
I was from Attica.
Walked up to town on Monday for a meeting. And town was starting to fill up with scrape, but everybody was. We're walking around with that weird, where's the fourth way to pay for parking? It's kind of interesting.
Yeah, so.
Of course, we just closed minor today.
Which is good.
It's a vehicle traffic, so that'll solve the minor, the minor issue.
Out of there on the summer season, maybe we look at.
Yeah.
Exactly what we're talking about, it's improving.
I thought we had agreed.
We're trying to encourage compliance.
Right, yeah.
We're trying to do whatever.
The people were trying really, really hard. And I felt bad, but I was late for the meetings. I couldn't have a conversation. I just me and her threw them, we get to town to do my meeting.
So that, why would they?
Cause if, if we're gonna go through May thirty first.
It's coming downtown on Wednesday, uh, so those notice a lot of cones, a lot, uh, early Wednesday morning, block them up. Avenue parking in those areas where we're getting some paint down. But it won't be for very long. That paint dries in like ten minutes and then we're gone.
Okay, cool.
Very cool. That's Wednesday, Paul? Wednesday, alright. And and this, uh, this is important timing because it's, uh, this is the time to do it when we've got the street cleared. We got it swept today and it's looking really good. And you get those lines done and then at the end, in the fall, uh, like November, when we're switching it back to traffic. Uh, you want to make sure those spaces, you can see those spaces and that this, so this is the time to paint. Some people might say, well, why are we painting them now when it's gonna be closed all summer? But really, from a practical matter, this makes a lot of sense.
It makes it being instantaneous or more instantaneous.
Maintenance, right? Let's get it done with, we collectively agreed to close it early.
Yep.
To allow Paul to have time for maintenance, so let's get all the maintenance done, then he should get done.
I agree. Well. And I said to, to Guy, I know that we're, we're okay with extending this parking from, like this parking contract to the thirty first. But if we wait till the thirty first to deal with slacks, which is something we talked about.
Last.
No, we talked about it before then too, like even before the executive session. Like can we, can in in the negotiations for our current contract, can we move that forward so the flags go out? Because while it's only the beginning of May, this is when people, people, school, for some people, school ends in like twelve days.
Well, sir.
Like, I know that's negotiating, but can we like shove some of that forward?
You guys are welcome in.
I, I just think that's gonna be real hard to do this close to, uh, a contract. Uh, you know, being implemented or, uh, you know, possibly.
Contract and clean all that stuff.
Yeah, um, I think just realistically, this time around, it it, uh. It probably isn't something.
Couple of weeks, we'll have, they have some direction on that.
Yeah, exactly, uh, because, uh, I I was, uh, very candid with council where I think, uh, two or three weeks, this should be.
Okay. The flags don't take that long to make anyways, so, yeah.
Nope, just little observations.
Yeah, if you see people that are actually trying to comply, like, we would like to encourage them.
And they were very. Were very hard to comply.
Get their steps in.
Maybe too hard.
Janine, you gave a thumbs up, uh, to Andy's initial question. I just want to make sure you didn't have anything for your.
Nothing else. Thank you.
Alright, another item, uh, that's been discussed and I I think there's consensus on this, but just wanted council to have a chance to think about it before we actually. Um, try it is, um. Closing Riverside Drive to vehicle traffic. It would still be accessible for emergency vehicles. But, uh, the benefit of this is that it would. It would still be accessible for emergency vehicles, but uh, the benefit of this is that we get ahead of folks who want to cut through to get to other places, uh, it's a narrow road, as everybody knows, um.
Just to clarify Riverside from where.
Oh, sorry, Riverside, sorry, Riverside from the townhomes um, on the east end, the start of the townhome, just east of the bedbridge to the Argo.
So it would basically be the two pedestrian bridges?
Uh, it would be east of the west, and so it would be east of the Argo. And also for clarification, when we say close, uh, pedestrians and bicycles was allowed. A wide enough opening to get through, but just not cars.
Are you just talking about temporarily until the construction's over?
No, I, I, uh, we're thinking permanent. But uh, this is a good time to think about closing it, even if we want to just try it on a temporary basis because there's a lot of construction going on over there, there're gonna be times where that street has to be closed anyhow, related to construction. Um, but um, I think it would, it would help protect the residential uh, neighborhood there because uh, you can have, you know, cut through traffic there, you can have people trying to park back in there, make it still good even if it's uh, through the street. But um, we think it, it would, it would also, um, that is a share of the street right now with the, with the greenway between the two bridges. So you got pedestrians walking along there, bikers on that narrow road, so.
So no one's gonna park in front of the Argo?
Well, again, this would, this would be the, the.
On the east end of the Argo property.
It would be east end of the, of Argo parking. So, so just east of the Argo, well there.
Just east there, going towards.
They still have access to their parking, still have access.
Okay, okay, I was just thinking.
They still have access to.
That's a short stretch, I may have to do more something.
Do we have a, any kind of study of what type of traffic usage is there right now? I mean, it's just people cutting, trying to find a shortcut mostly.
Yeah, so.
And maybe some of the locals might use that. And because it's quicker if it's backed up, but I'm assuming that those locals in that area are gonna be all for that.
I, I would think so.
Have we talked to?
And I think it makes a lot of sense.
But you know, the first step would be just, you know, kind of get the thoughts, is this, you know, something we want to raise or not?
What I have heard from people over there is that when they're walking their dogs, I think you and I have talked about this too, when you're walking, you're walking your dog, and people go zipping through, regardless of who it is, they're like, what the heck?
They'll walk over on his trail.
Yeah.
You're dodging cars.
And it seems like it makes a lot of sense.
Just for that small piece, I would agree.
The onset of this, I mean, it seems like it makes a lot of sense.
I think, I think it definitely makes sense as a, as a trial, see how it goes.
I mean, the big concern from my perspective, I'm sure Chairman shares it, is, is life safety. So if for some reason Gilson Bridge is, you know, shut down, you still have a way from emergency vehicles.
We can't get a big trucks over Gilson Bridge anyway, so it's nice to have that shut down and not have that block, that's our only action.
Absolutely, and you're talking about, Jeremy, that traffic is backed up and now it's trying to merge over the Gilson Bridge.
We can't take any over like twelve, twelve thousand, twenty thousand, twenty thousand pounds over Gilson Bridge, that's the rating for it. Twenty third is another issue, it's forty thousand pound bridge. Uh, Gilson has a lower rating because they're in the middle. So yeah, it's, it's a total concern, Riverside's completely blocked. We lose all of our access with our R D R S to, to the townhouses and gold camp. And all of that, and that's a huge concern.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, it should be.
I would be for, I would like to hear what the resident, because the, the townhome, you're even sort of instilled. I would like to get, well, I'm for if they're not gonna be totally irritated, but I, I don't think they will just pull one I heard.
Yeah, we said tunnels, yeah, we agree, it's a NASCAR track, I think.
So you believe in NASCAR track, that's the question.
I know one of our planning commissioners lives in one of those townhomes, and I mentioned it to him long ago, and you're like, wow, that would be great.
Okay.
But that's a, that's a.
That's only one.
End of one, but I wonder if we could do some sort of survey or study or something, if that would be useful.
I think they're, I think Lisa's right, I think you're right, I think you're gonna get a pretty good consensus that, first of all, it's safety first. It's also just privacy, you get a lot of lucky loot that'll put back into that, that hold the sack and come back out. And they don't drive with respect to the kids that live in that neighborhood, or the pets that are in that neighborhood either.
Yeah, it's quite tight, and I wonder if maybe it would be good to run it as a trial, and then if there's a credible amount of backlash, then.
That, that's what I said, I think every, any, always try the trial.
Email them too, email them, say, hey, we're doing this trial, please provide your feedback.
And that's.
If they're mad, you know we're gonna hear about it.
Yeah, and that's, but that's easy for them to know, and they'll just come do, and I think they'll get, without having to prepare a survey document or something.
As with any kind of change, getting the ownership and buy-in and making sure they don't feel like it's just happening to them without their voice or choice. Um, I don't imagine people would be upset, but just communicating, I think will be key.
Right, um, is there anything else with expanding the managed parking area and, and updating the parking plan to really cover the whole city? Is there anything else that council wants to, in particular, would like to see in there, um, particularly with the east end, cause that'll be the biggest change?
Uh, I, I don't think so, but I would love to see the map before we really like to see, I mean, we are gonna see the map, I guess is the question?
Yep.
Okay, so I'd just like to see the map, and then I think that's an opportunity, just as Janine uh, just said, to let this, what, east end and the west end residents and businesses know, this is our plan. What do you think about where we're booking for residential only, or, you know, paid parking, if you will? If, if there's even any on the west side of that.
But it also gives us an opportunity to protect all of the residential parking, so that.
Oh, no, yeah, and I, I, I thought that that we should do that from the very beginning, so that's, that's us.
And then, I don't know, part of that plan is the businesses like my liquor store, Marion's in particular, the Napa use that parking that's right in front. That can't be open for people to just go there, park all day, so there's gotta be some kind of control there.
I think about the continuation of like, in your case, in particular, the liquor store was a prime example of uh, the fifteen minute.
Yes.
Line continuing.
You could do the same thing for yards, you could do like pickup, like takeout.
Yep.
Like, there's, there's opportunity to have those parking.
I think that's a great idea, all along that, that stretch, there's opportunities for fifteen to thirty minute.
No, varies.
Probably helps Napa by having.
No, start, you know, you start like eleven. That allows variance to have.
Cause there's nothing to keep them out.
I guess that's true.
And that would capture bikes that, of course, who stay a long time, like, you can sneak in before eleven and get a ride in, fine. Not, you know, sort of adding to the problem. It's like, I feel like last summer when, or last fall, when it got real busy, it wasn't until like that eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock time, and so.
The big day rush was what we were seeing.
Yeah, it was like, you know, if you went up into the park at eight AM, there was no cars parked, and you're by yourself, but if you went at eleven, it's, it's.
But we do have to protect all of it, like, you know, Marion's, Conrad's, the two yards, all the way down towards the McDonald's.
We're protecting no different than we do downtown though, right? Vodges will allow the same, all the same protection of Vodges, that's. People pay for parking, if the parking is open for the business, awesome, if it's not, they park a little farther away. This is our ability to kind of make it fair for all the businesses down, which we've never really done, in my opinion.
Eleven o'clock, is it eleven or is it ten?
Ten, six, seven, eight, yeah.
So I think this is a chance to kind of even the playing field for once, that they can't say, well, we've been penalized for all these years, what about them? Maybe you want to even across the board, we use some pickup spots for liquor store, for Napa. You know, we have these are, which would help Napa out because they have a, their parking spots are always used. And their customers have a hard time getting in and out of the store, and they're carrying carts up the street. Which impacts your business in a negative way, I don't agree on that. But I think there's a way to blend this all out, so that businesses have thirty minute pickups, where you go in and grab your stuff and get out, fifteen, whatever that is. Mixed with, we need to pay for parking, so you can load your bike and go and do what you want to do for the day.
And a lot of this implemented is from bikers, so I don't know if we have any kind of idea of how long they're staying on the trail and then getting off the trail. Because that could be part of our plan, is knowing that information, but I'm guessing two or three hours, they unload their bike, they ride the trail, they're back to their vehicle, two or three hours, you're turning that space over.
Well, it'd be interesting to know though, Scott.
But it would be helpful if we know about the average time.
We, we've heard from combo that uh, mountain bikers typically will go for two, a minimum of two hours. So you could limit the parking to two hours, but you know, someone who's fast, they just want to get in early, do their bike ride and get out.
Now, there's gonna be another thing that's added to that, is once the gondola goes on, those people are not, they might spend four or five hours.
Right, right.
I think, I think I agree, Jeremy, let's just make it fair across the board. You know, but I will say, if we're gonna do that, we need to look at, I've heard this from downtown businesses, on the corners of our cross streets, are there designated fifteen minute, like I said.
I was just thinking that, that's, it has to be.
Well, we have to deal with the library, that's one, but then the rest of those businesses have asked for designated fifteen minute spots.
For ticket.
Cause I've seen people say, oh, this is a pickup spot, but the business is doing it, we're not doing it. The businesses, you know, have been um, proactive, saying this is a pickup spot, they put their own signs up. So I think if we're gonna do fifteen minute pickup spots for east end.
Could be a hard one.
We need to do a couple on each block for our downtown businesses, like, we need to be fair. I like the idea of being fair to everybody, same rules.
And we do have those now in certain areas, but do you like to see that expanded or just?
I think a few more, and you know.
I'm of the same opinion that we make those fifteen minute pickups uh, permanent, it gets those signs off those temporary pedestals and puts them on a, a permanent sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you could have one easily at each corner, or, or maybe two, I don't know, but it would drive business to like, for locals to go downtown and get something and.
If you want to work pizzas on Vodges, you just want to go pick your damn pizza when you're.
And get out of there, you're not staying there.
Maybe if you needed the can, because you're still spending money in town.
Exactly, and we're encouraging it.
Think about fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, if you did one on each corner, that's still only twelve spots that are fifteen minute spots. So that to me addresses like, the complaints that I've heard from the downtown folks about we don't pay where, like, my people just want to run in and grab and leave, they can't.
Well, I don't know if you want to overdo it to begin with, though, you might implement a couple of spots, see how it works, because if you overdo it, you're taking away those spots from revenue, gaining.
You have some spots that are already loading zones, that um, on the weekends and holidays, they're open to, to parking, but we could turn those spots into those fifteen minute parking spots.
Because most businesses are getting deliveries once or twice a week and.
It's usually before eleven, I mean, isn't that the?
It's the springer, it's usually before eleven, yeah.
I do see them passing by the library and I'm already at work, so.
With the traffic here though, in the hall there, sometimes they can't get up here. But I just think, I like Jeremy's mantra of let's be fair for everybody, everybody has access to some fifteen minute spots, everybody else pays.
Could it be a loading and pickup spot in one, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Because implement kind of both, loading or pickup, limiting loading to fifteen minutes, do you think people can unload it?
I think it's, you'd probably have to fudge that fifteen minutes for some things, but uh, I think the, the space being available for only uh, fifteen minute pickup or, you know, loading, unloading. Uh, there, we could have another spot like, these guys are suggesting, maybe just across minor streets on, on the other side of avenue, that's just a fifteen minute parking.
And our parking management system, the people that implement the parking might have some suggestions for this too, I would think, because they have, they manage parking in other areas, so.
All right, uh, anything further before we uh, go to our regular meeting?
I, I can address it when we go to um, to Andy's document.
Oh, you got a.
It's, but it's a combo, it's a kind of a question, and I just need to remind me of the history.
Okay. All right, uh, it is six fifty-nine, I would ask everybody to take a five for a comfort break, and we'll uh, be here uh, for a regular meeting.
And being here, uh, for a regular meeting.
That's not a bad thing.
I don't know what.
It's a good one. It says me. When I saw you last.
I'll write my own notes.
My chair, but. It's like an office street people and why do I care? They go, no. And it's been that for about five years now. Okay. I'm gonna go.
Time you said the good chair.
Sure.
And that's a long time.
That's true. That's where she.
Kind of what I guess I'm told.
So when you, when you're being excited, it's definitely going to be paying for your trail. I realize we're going to be spending so much.
Place some more trash chairs.
Well, it is.
We're just scaled back. We're, this is our match. Live here, this is what the Aims and the seller parts wildlife grant for the white supply we didn't get.
Right?
That's what we're doing. We're just doing, you know, the trails, next two trails for the money.
You allocated for that.
I have the whole chair and stay right here.
And we got that money from, and that's just tax revenue? And how many more?
Some of that might be.
Okay. Is that, wasn't wanting attention that the cargo money would be paid? For us to wire the trails.
And part of that is our, I can't tell you exactly how much.
That's fine, yes. Mary, do you have your script? Mr. Harmon? Do you have your script?
Okay, okay.
I was just saying.
Well, it's a combination of.
Yeah, and I mean.
That's a good question.
Well, I mean, I, I think. I just figured better to be very clear, but, but yeah, but that's making it an intro. It's just been a while.
Oh, yeah. I can't even, I cannot even. My head will pop off.
No, that's the same.
Oh.
Hi, Jim.
I actually, yeah, like I, I don't know. But we could have people without a blanket. If we can designate somewhere for that, I think that's why, because there's a lot of places where people live in their vans. Can't camp overnight.
I hope so.
Right. Okay, thank you, Dylan. I appreciate it. Scott, please come on up.
I'm lucky, my brother.
I absolutely would go insane if I'm sorry. To me, right? I mean, I would go, I would lose my mind.
I don't think it's wrong with it. I think people that do, it's like our kid. You tell me, hey, this is where you can camp and open up on your window? That's fabulous. So I would support something like that.
Andy, you, you good?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's good. All right. Uh, hey, I would like to welcome everybody, uh, to the April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five regular city council meeting for, uh, the city of Idaho Springs. We'll call it the order at seven oh six. And I'd like to start off with roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Here.
Robyn O.
Here.
Jim Clark.
Here.
Kate Collier. Derek Lee Smith-Annable.
Here.
Mayor Puttan Jeremy Dones.
Here.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Here.
All please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated.
Listen originally, by the way.
I know.
We have an agenda before us tonight. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Uh, thank you, Jeremy. And do I have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, second from Lisa. And any discussion of the agenda? Our hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Does anyone tonight feel they have a conflict of interest?
I would recuse myself from ordinance nine.
Scott, thank you. Uh, ordinance nine?
I would say I, I need to recuse myself too.
Al- also on ordinance nine? Okay. And Lisa?
Same topic.
All right, that will be noted. Uh, we have some, uh, minutes before us from, uh, April fourteenth. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to approve the minutes from April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Kate. And do I have a second? Uh, thank you, Jeremy, for a second. And any discussion of the minutes? Our hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, I would like to enter, take, obtain a motion of the bills from April fifteenth through April twenty-eighth.
Make a motion to approve the bills from April fifteenth through April twenty.
Thank you, Jeremy. And do I have a second?
Again?
Uh, all right, Jimmy. Welcome back.
Thank you.
And, uh, for your second also. Um, any, uh, discussion of the bills? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Robyn O.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lee Smith-Annable.
Yes.
Mayor Fokten Jeremy Dones. Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Uh, next up, we do have, uh, scheduled, uh, public comment. And, uh, Pat and Susan, uh, welcome. It's good to have you. Please come on up to the podium.
Um, I'm, thank you very much for having us here tonight. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen.
Can you just state your, um, names and address for the record?
Pat Mullen. Susan Mullen.
Thank you.
Um, we're here tonight. I'm kind of a fact finding, uh, venture really. Uh, we want to put it, we'd like to put a park bench on the bicycle walk path between, um, the Forest Service and the west end of town. Um, it would be in honor of my in-laws, Joe and Helen Aruska, who recently passed away, and, um, my son, who died in two thousand and five. I've got some pictures here of the area. I'd like to have the bench put. I think one of my questions tonight was, nobody seemed to know whether that was Forest Service property or city property. So that's why I don't know if I'm in the right spot or not.
Do you mind? It's a, is it on the bike path? Yeah, yeah.
Bike path would sit in, uh, the property adjacent to it is private.
But it could, it could. I love Memorial. It's everything in honor.
The west is, it might go up from the left end to the Dorothy Vicman Bridge and all that stuff. Yeah. Well, there's.
How's on the left? Here.
So where, is that ours?
This is ours.
Yeah. I thought we're out of town with what?
It's where the two paths actually come together. There's a high path that.
Forest Service was.
But not this. It's got a black top.
And then there's a. If you walk out your door, it's where the bike path will go a little bit here. So.
Oh, oh, oh.
It's like the same as where I.
I mean, I mean, just do it in the.
This is city. I agree.
The memorial, luckily you're gonna raise someone up that.
Uh, so that's.
All right, uh, council, uh, uh, I would like to, uh, uh, let these folks continue. Thank you for sharing them. That actually is very helpful.
Okay, um, you know, I walk that path about five days a week. And one of the things that I've walked by there before I thought about this red bench for my in-laws was there's nowhere along that whole stretch for anybody to take a break. And so, you know, I, I thought about that. And then when I thought about my in-laws after they passed away, I thought, you know, that, that'd be a good place to put memorial bench for them is up there. I'm willing to pay for it, you know, I, it's whatever the cost is. If it's something the city takes care of or whatever, I will do whatever I need to do to do that, but, you know, I, like I said, tonight was more of a, uh, back finding tour, see if it's possible, if we could put one there, you know, uh.
Well, thank you, you know, and normally we do not have back and forth in, uh, public comment. Uh, however, uh, I think that was very helpful for this to be in council's packet.
Good.
Uh, you mentioned fact finding, uh, I, I can assure you, nobody was, was aware of this before tonight. And, uh, I can commit to you that we will get to the bottom of this and we will get back to you on, uh, you know, if it's possible. Uh, we'll, we are going to discuss this also with, uh, with Paul Crane. But I think probably all of us have recognized that there, there really isn't a place to take a break uh, down there on the path.
Well, and, and not only that, you know, he, he, depending on what the cost was, I didn't be willing to maybe put a shelter there. Uh, just a lean to roof where people get under, when there's lightning.
Mm-hmm.
There's no place to get away. There's nothing but trees.
And we have had, uh, citizens purchase memorial benches in town before, so it's not unusual for us to do this. We do have a program for that. We do. We have a program already set up, so.
Like I said, I don't want to take too much of you folks' time, you know, uh.
Well, 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 thank you. We have a little bit of homework to do, but I promise this is not going to slip through the cracks.
Okay.
And, uh, by the way, fine, fine folks, uh, and I think, uh, uh, I think that that is, is something that council would very much look forward to, uh, getting to the bottom of if we can actually place it uh, here. But, uh, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, guys.
We have your contact information. Is that correct? Uh, okay. All right. Thank you. I thought I saw that on the floor. Just wanted to make sure.
Thanks so much.
Uh, and now I think, uh, do we have anyone online with public comment? I saw Michael had, uh, signed up. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anybody online, if they.
I don't see anyone online, but if anyone online wants.
Okay.
Please raise your hand in chat.
All right, uh, then Michael, please come up. Uh, welcome. It's good to have you.
Thank you. It's good to be here. Right.
Wonderful.
Wonderful.
Ready?
Can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Michael Castanab, seventeen oh two Virginia Street.
Perfect. Thank you.
No, I'm gonna just read. Um, okay, so my hope is to show up in person or online over the coming months with data. A lot of data and ideas to help us see what, why we should increase the amount of SDR licenses and consider a revised approach to issuing them. Hopefully, after a few three-minute talks and documentation, I present and also others from the community speaking as well. You'll put this on the agenda and we can explore it with this city council team. I'm assuming it's been discussed a lot in the past. I don't know. Um, I don't know when or by whom, but maybe we can do. Um, I've been researching SDRs in the USA and a lot of issues come up, of course. For tonight, I just want to tell you something I did with AI this morning via Chat GPT and separately perplexity, which are both too good AI platforms. Okay, I asked.
Mi- Michael, I, I'm going to apologize.
Sure.
Uh, I just want, uh, the door closed. Just, we want to hear, we want to hear what you have to say and. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. And, and, uh, please continue. But you were saying that.
I thought you were gonna say.
No, 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 but, uh, you, you were saying that, uh, you had, uh, just incorporated some AI.
So I, I this morning was playing around with the question of, uh, create a list. You know, without any, I wasn't giving it any, any prompts other than create a list of touristy and moderately, uh, touristy towns with populations of under five thousand people that had more licenses than Idaho Springs. Okay, under five thousand, many more licenses. The list was extensive, like it just populated a list of so many towns. And, uh, there are nine, it gave me nine without a deep dive. If you deal with AI, sometimes you have like prompt, do deep dive. I'll quickly read those nine towns. Um, Frisco, thirty-two hundred, nine hundred licenses. Seems crazy, but that's what. Prestone, a hundred and fifty population, ninety-seven licenses. Florisart, I never heard of it. Hundred and fifty pop, one twelve licenses. I'll just say the, uh, the numbers. Netherlands, sixteen hundred sixty plus. Leadville, twenty-six hundred, one hundred plus. Mametoo Springs, five thousand, a hundred and fifty plus. Lake City, four hundred forty plus. Yuray, a thousand ninety plus. Grand Lake, five hundred sixty plus. I asked AI, that's just Colorado. Okay, there were a hundred. I asked Color, I asked AI for the opposite. I said, give me the opposite. Give me towns that, um, that are even triple the population of Idaho Springs with less licenses. Stuck. Not one. I'm like pushing it. Come on. Give me, give me, give me some places that have less licenses than Idaho Springs that have similar or slightly greater populations. It comes up with Santa Monica, Boulder, Palo Alto, Maui, Las Vegas and com- and, and and complicated stuff around it. I'll come back again and speak more. I, I have.
Michael, you, you had an interruption. Uh, uh, please.
One more minute?
Continue.
So, so the point is that AI had a really hard time giving me anything comparable to Idaho Springs, right?
Okay.
I, I, I know the big argument with, with, um, with, uh, such few licenses seems to be, okay, that it, 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 it improves housing affordability. I did quick research on that, okay? May, I'm sure a lot of you have done this, but research and endless real world examples show that most short-term rentals never wind up being affordable housing for the community. But I'm gonna do a much deeper dive into that so that I, my, what I want to do over the next few months with whatever time I have is show up online or here, educate myself, educate all of us with three minutes and maybe over the next few months, get it on the agenda. I also have some ideas about rotating licenses, um, prioritizing people, maybe prioritizing people who have been applying for a few years like me, okay, you know? And, uh, maybe there's a way to prioritize people who have applied for so many years. It's enough for today. I'm gonna keep coming back with more information. There's no rush on this.
Michael, thank you. And, uh, I will tell you what, what I would have, uh, also told the, the fine folks earlier. We appreciate folks coming in, giving them their evening, uh, to share with us, uh, with the public comment, what's on their mind or what they, how they feel could shape the community in a, a positive way. So thank you very, very much.
Sure.
And we look forward to seeing you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we don't have anything with liquor licensing tonight. Is our finance officer with us?
I believe she is.
Oh.
Dylan? Yeah, I tried to promote her to ban list and allow her to talk, but. Yeah, she does. She should be rejoining.
Mayor and council, how are you tonight?
Hi, it's good to see you.
Good to see you too. Hope to be there in person this time, but, um, the audit season I'm in just did not allow for that, so maybe next time. But I would like to share my screen with you and go over the March financial statements.
Yes, please.
Okay, screen sharing. Can everyone see these? Do I need to make them larger?
Yeah, it would help if they were, uh, actually quite a bit larger. Maybe, maybe one more? If you can.
Maybe just a little more. Uh, one more, maybe? All right, that's it.
Any better?
Um, maybe count one. Oops, other way. There's something blocking it on the left end. Maybe go back one, Lori. One more.
Yeah, I can't get rid of the Zoom picture, but it, how's that?
That's good.
Okay. Well, um, here we are in March already of twenty twenty-five, so a quarter of the way through the year. So these financial statements, I want to focus on a couple of things. One is your fund balances at this point in time. This first page always talks about your cash and you do have five, uh, point one million dollars in cash allocated to the various funds that earn it and use it. So here's your general fund has about a tenth of that, five hundred and five thousand in it. And if we go down a little bit on this page, we'll see that your fund balance is highlighted. And that's always the fund balance of the year that you had at the beginning of the year. So now that we've prepared for your audit, your audit, your field work has been accomplished by the auditors. Um, they're working on the financial statements for us to review. Um, we know that this million one, uh, three fifty-three is a pretty good figure for what you started the year with in reserves that you've built up over time. Um, revenue year to date for the first quarter in Idaho Springs usually has, is not too good because that's not your best time of year for sales taxes and you haven't really gotten the bulk of your property taxes yet either. So I wouldn't be too concerned about that, although you did plan to, um, draw down some fund balances this year. So that, you'll be seeing some of that. But starting the year with a good fund balance of over a million three, your revenues for the year, um, over on the right-hand column are the, um, percentages of the total budget that you've received so far. So you've gotten about a quarter of the property taxes. Sale taxes, as I said, come in a little slowly, um, in January and February. And then your other, uh, taxes are coming in about as expected. Billing permits is one of your bigger, um, revenue sources, but of course, most of that is done during the better weather months. Um, moving on to page two, you do have a fair amount of, uh, uh, rental income that you get from your various leases. And your total general fund revenue is at, uh, about twenty percent of what you budgeted for the year at the end of the first quarter. So that's, that's about what I would expect to see. Um, Andy has alerted me to the fact that some of your salaries are appearing high and we have made some changes in the budget as to where various people's salaries would be allocated. Uh, we've looked at that a couple of times, so we're gonna take another look at it, because it seems like it's still being, uh, kind of showing coming in a little high in certain departments. We will look, get back to you on that in future months if there's any issue. Your streets department is at about twenty-three percent for the year in, in expenses. Admin is at twenty-eight percent. Community promotion, a little under eighteen percent. And building inspection is only around four percent, since there's not much activity yet in that area. Your police department is looking really pretty good in all of its line items are coming in around twenty-five percent for the year. And when we go to the end, they're at twenty-six point three percent of what's been budgeted for the year through the first quarter, so very close to the twenty-five percent. Uh, court expenditures are at twenty-two percent. Berry Department, a quarter's worth has been sent to them. And parks is at eighteen percent. And again, you'd find a lot more expenses in the summer, probably for the parks than during this time of year. So overall, your general fund expenditures are at twenty-four percent for the year. Your revenues were around twenty percent. So you're showing a slight loss so far at this point in the year, which we expect in the higher sales tax month to be made up. Again, here's the budget where we did budget for a drawdown of your fund balance during the year of about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So we'll keep watching that. of about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, so we'll keep watching that. Keeping the trust fund with no activity, here's your ramp fund. Started the year with about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars still in it. That's for the Colorado Boulevard maintenance. And you've earned some interest on that so far, and had no expense, real expenses so far. Improvement Fund, this has a little bit of better news that you may remember from the end of last year, where much of this, um, advance that was due from the wastewater fund had been repaid. It used to be over two, two million. So now it's under half a million, and the fund has beginning equity of a million dollars and already earned three hundred and seventy thousand this year. So that, that department is, uh, that fund is, uh, looking pretty good. It has these revenue sources that are coming in as similarly to what we saw in the general fund. And then you, um, have gotten a grant from GOCO, uh, so far this year for four hundred and sixty thousand. I believe it's for trail. Improvement expenditures, uh, most of the action here is in the lower line items for your park improvement, police station improvements, master plan for the sports complex, PD equipment, so this is where most of your, your money's being spent. Whoops, I meant to show you the bottom line there, excuse me. And then, um, your total fund expenditures are only about eight percent of what's been budgeted, so you have quite a large budget, um, of four million if all these projects are completed, and you've gotten a start on that in the first quarter to the tune of three hundred and seventeen thousand. Again, this, this fund was budgeted to intentionally draw down the reserves and build the projects during this year. And as we've mentioned on the, um, beginning page, you had considerable fund equity here that you are trying to use up for these capital projects. Conservation Trust Fund started the year with a hundred and twenty-three thousand, and so far, um, you've gotten in some lottery funds and had no expenses yet. Street Sales Tax Fund, fund balance started a million two. You've already, um, brought in another two hundred and twenty-five thousand this year from the sales taxes for streets. So there's your sales tax, uh, coming in. Some interest earned on it as well, and then your expenditure, um, budget, uh, these street projects are all pending. Um, I should say the first three. And you also pay your interest and principal payments on the bonds that financed this fund initially, um, to tune of over five hundred thousand a year. What a fund. This fund is looking pretty good with assets and liabilities. The big numbers in assets, little numbers in liabilities. The exception is your long-term debt, the notes to get paid off over time, not all in one year. And so you've got considerable fund equity here of over eight million. Not all of it's in cash, of course, a lot of it's in, in capital assets. Revenue is coming in here with, from the sales taxes, already a hundred and seven thousand this year, and about twice that much from charges for services. And continue to look at those charges and, and whether they're set right, and, um, I know you're continuing on some projects in your utility billing operation. You have also received some grant money for your capital project for highway, um, the one oh three water line. So here's your operational, most of these expenditures are around what you'd expect for the beginning of the year. Um, when we get over to distribution expenses, you see similar here. Twenty-four percent for the year, fifteen percent for the year, and a lot being spent already on the water treatment plant upgrades and water distribution project upgrades. With much more to go. So this, uh, fund already is, uh, using up some of its fund balances also. Your bigger revenues come in, in the, in the summer. You only bill every other month, so in March, there may have only been two months that had revenue showing. So you will end up over the course of the year with a better outlook than, than this, um, shows at the moment, I believe. Wastewater, here's where we have the, uh, the corresponding good news about the sales tax improvement advance. It has only four hundred and forty-three thousand, no significant amount, but it's not over two million like it had been. So that's very encouraging. And you have a lot of, uh, value here in your capital assets. Most of that's from the wastewater treatment plant itself. Um, but you do have a fair amount of cash in this fund as well. And that's what will be used to pay back the advance ultimately. So a fund equity of eight million. Sales taxes and, and user fees coming in again. And I did mention that you probably had only had one, um, month of utility billing revenue, and that's true, there was none in March, so you would have had it in February, but not January or March. Operational expenditures again are, when you scan down the percentages for the year, uh, most of them except certain things that have chunks of, uh, of bills, and they aren't spread out during the year, are around what you'd expect for a quarter of the year. The whole budget for operations is at nineteen percent of budget, and the collection operations at seventeen with some capital plant, capital projects again, uh, beginning, but still a fair amount to go. And your debt service payments that are made, uh, twice a year that haven't had, haven't been due yet. And your last fund is your Parking Enterprise Fund, which is building a fair amount of, uh, equity. It's not in, in cash and in some construction in process and in land value. Um, but you have some lease purchase agreements that are payable over the, over time. And, and any fund equity of about a million three. Revenues for the year are mostly, um, tentative for C dot contributions of three point two million. If, when that's available. You do have some payments in lieu of, uh, construction that certain entities pay, and then you have your capital expenditures so far, which are about, including engineering, they're about two hundred and ninety thousand. Can't quite get those both to highlight. There we go. So that gives you a picture at the end of the first quarter, which I think is a, a good picture, and, and it seems like you're on track, and a lot of your capital and big projects have begun, so that's a good, uh, indicator. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Uh, Council, questions for Lorraine? All right, Lorraine, uh, a wealth of information as usual, and thank you for pointing out, uh, we're a little high on the, uh, wages right now, and I'm, I'm sure we'll be taking a very close look at that. And, uh, I want to thank you. I want to thank you very much, uh, for your help with this.
You're welcome, happy to help. Have a good evening.
Oh, thank you, you too.
Thanks, Lorraine.
Thank you, goodbye.
All right, next up, we have, uh, Resolution Number Fifteen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number Fifteen, Series Two Thousand Twenty-Five, a resolution adopting the Idaho Springs Historical Sights and Facilities Preservation Plan, two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-eight.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second?
A second.
Oh, sorry.
In harmony.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Lisa. And, uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Capenelle.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Mayor Potem, Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Uh, next up, we have Resolution Number Sixteen, uh, our investment policy. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve, uh, Resolution Number Sixteen, Series Two Thousand Twenty-Five, a resolution approving and adopting an investment policy.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
Hold on a second.
Uh, so, uh, thank you, Jeremy, uh, on a second. And, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Capenelle.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Mayor Potem, Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Uh, next up, uh, is ordinance number nine, and it's mentioned at the start of our meeting, uh, both, uh, Lisa and Scott, uh, will, uh, be recusing themselves on this, uh, vote, uh. I, I think it's fine. It, it.
Yeah.
You're here. Um, and, uh, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number nine, Series Two Thousand Twenty-Five, and ordinance amending Sections Twenty-One dash one-five and Twenty-One dash five, your other idleness, municipal code to amend the definition of efficiency dwelling unit, and it designated the same as a permitted use in the R three, R M C one, C two zone districts.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second from Jimmy. And any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Mayor Potem, Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
All right, um, we will move to ordinance second reading, and, um, we're gonna have a public hearing on this one. Uh, then let me ask you, um, do we, we don't have anybody from public, uh, service online tonight?
No.
Okay, all right. Um, all right, please bear with me on my spiel. But, uh, this is a hearing, uh, before council on item number fifteen A, April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. It's a public hearing on ordinance number seven, Series Two Thousand Twenty-Five, Excel franchise. Uh, the uh, ordinance granting a franchise to Public Service Company of Colorado for the non-exclusive right to provide, sell, and deliver gas and electricity to the city and its residents through the non-exclusive reasonable use of the city streets, public utility easements, and other city property. Uh, the council is required by law to hold a public hearing on this item. Uh, the order of hearing is as follows. I will invite city staff, uh, to present, uh, the ordinance, and, uh, uh, normally I would invite, uh, Public Service Company, uh, to provide any comment they wish, uh, whether the, uh, in person or in writing. I will invite public comment, and any questions from council may be asked and discussed. I will close the hearing. I will ask council for a motion on the ordinance. Uh, any questions before we begin the process? Uh, hearing none, none. I now open the, uh, public hearing on ordinance number seven at seven forty. And, uh, uh, city staff, please, uh, start us off.
I, I guess it's me. Uh, I'm sure you guys have all seen this franchise agreement before. Uh, I do not believe there's been any changes between first and second reading. Uh, as you know, Brandon was our utility attorney on this item. He's not here tonight, but if there's any specific questions, I can try to answer them, and if not, um, if it's something that only Brandon can answer, then we're just gonna have to wait to get his input on it.
Sure, I would like to ask council any, uh, question of, of Nick?
So nothing has changed in this first reading?
Not that I'm aware of, right?
Because I read it, and I was like, I don't think anything's changed, but this is not my wheelhouse.
No, I mean, if you all did not, uh, direct a change at first reading, then I doubt there was a change.
I don't think there was.
No.
No.
All right, and, uh, Dylan, do we have anybody signed up for public comment online?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss them. Uh, anyone in the audience, uh, for public comment on this matter? Uh, all right, and, uh, again, um, Public Service Company, uh, would have been, um, asked to make a comment if they wish. They're not here tonight. Um, so does council have anything further? All right. I will now close this hearing on, uh, ordinance number seven at seven forty-one. And, uh, council, do you need me to discuss, um, any items, uh, on this matter? And I would also entertain a motion if you're ready.
Well, I'd just say that there's a lot of language here that we rely on our attorneys for, because this is quite an agreement, um, and I think it's standard. I mean, a lot of things are standard, but again, you know, I voiced before how we hold them to their prices. That's a loose, loose-ended thing, I think. They have, uh, power to dictate what prices they charge us.
But, yeah, through the, you see, they're still regulated.
They're still regulated.
Right.
I, but agreement is, I think, standard throughout all municipalities. I would say where we could get changes in our favor, I, I think we made our best efforts to do so, but, uh, some of this you just can't change because of the regulations, so it really is quite standard.
Yeah.
All right, is there any further comment? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number seven, Two Thousand Twenty-Five, and ordinance granting a franchise to Public Service Company of Colorado for the non-exclusive right to provide, sell, and deliver gas and electric to the city and to residents through the non-exclusive reasonable use of the city streets, public utility easements, and other city property.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, second from Jeremy, thank you. And any further discussion?
One quick thing. Why are they still called Public Service Company of Colorado when there's Excel Energy?
Yeah.
They're still a subsidiary of Excel Energy, so they're, they're a hub.
It's still up within that name.
All right.
Believe it or not, I actually clerked at Excel Energy.
Oh.
Law school. They, it's, yeah.
They're responsible for those regulations.
Yeah. All right, all right, uh, any further discussion? All right, then, uh, roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Capenelle.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Mayor Potem, Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Uh, next up, uh, city attorney, Nick, did you have anything further for us tonight?
No, sir.
Well, thank you for, uh, coming all the way up.
Thanks for having me.
Appreciate it. Uh, city administrator, uh, Andy, you do have, uh, a request for action. And, uh, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve a proposal from the Colorado Mountain Bike Association, combat in the amount of one hundred and four thousand fifty-eight dollars to construct Phase Four Trails Number Fifteen and Number Seventeen, coming from account number two-one-dash-zero-zero-dash-six-zero-two-four.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Kate. Thank you. Um, any discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Capenelle.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Mayor Potem, Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And, uh, Andy, uh, thank you for your report. Uh, just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything further to share with us tonight?
Uh, just a couple items. I wanted to just follow up on the public comment, uh, Pat and Suzy Mullins' request. Uh, we do have a, uh, longstanding memorial bench program in the city. So they hadn't actually, uh, yet received an application, so, uh, Wonder, our deputy C clerk, will send out the, um, application and the details on that program. And I was wondering if, Paul, I know you talked with the Mullins out in the hall, were you able to determine if that area is in the city?
It is in the city.
City property?
I was, uh, running it, you know, uh, as all these memorial benches, uh, typically are paid for by the person that's putting our, our request on the bench. I was trying to give them, you know, I don't want them to be shocked by a price tag, these things are pretty expensive. And, uh, so I gave them that, uh, it seemed phased them at all, they're willing to move forward. I had mentioned, you know, for that application, for that bench program, to, to, you know, contact Wonder about that, or I'm not sure if it's available online or not. I, uh, also steered them towards that.
Good question.
Paul, thank you for getting to the bottom of that.
It looks like the bench could be located in that.
It is in the city, I mean. It is in the city.
It is in the city, and I think it's also city, uh, property as well, isn't it?
It is.
It's also your property, the whole, the whole strip.
Is there some of these benches that are? Is there some of these benches that are more weather resistant than others, Paul, you know?
We have pretty much one style of bench. Uh it's, so it's all uh pretty uniform throughout when you see one of these memorial benches. The only thing that changes is the, the brass plaque.
Okay.
And that's personalized.
But there's not, there's not a lot of maintenance involved though.
No, no.
Same way the day heavy ones that are kind of powder cut.
Yes.
And those things last.
They do last forever.
Is there an opportunity? I'm just asking. Is there an opportunity for them to do some kind of shelter or do we not?
We absolutely can. I would try, instead of trying to buy something like a boxed um shelter, would uh try and find a local craftsman or somebody or local professional or something like that in place.
Only because it sounds like they were interested in that as well.
Yes, they were.
Okay.
All right, Andy, you said a couple of items.
The other item is um just wanted to alert council that um our facilitator for the council retreat, uh Todd Leopold, the regional uh director or regional manager with uh DOLA uh would like to speak to each council member in advance of the retreat. So I, I think he's connected with one of you, but I, I know he sent out a list of uh dates and times. I think it's just going to be a fairly short uh phone call or whatever works for you. But I know that will help him uh as he prepares for the retreat um coming up the second Friday in May. Sixteen, thank you. So just wanted to just be looking for that in your emails, please.
Thank you very much. And uh next up, Guy, um we've got your report and you do have a request for uh one action item. And uh do I have a motion?
I move to approve an addendum to agreement with Interstate Parking Company of Colorado LLC Parking Management Services.
Uh thank you, Kate. And uh do I have a second?
A second.
A second, Lisa. Thank you. And any discussion?
So if this goes right, you said you figured this, you wanted to cover this, that we'd be able to see this before the end of May, do you think?
Well, I think quite gotcha.
Do you think we'll be able to see like a parking agreement fleshed out by the end of May?
I think so. The way things are going now, I believe so.
And of course, this uh extension is just through the end of May. Any uh further questions?
What's the term of the agreement you're looking for?
Uh it's a month, a month extension.
No.
Oh, uh five years with two, two-year extensions uh at our uh discretion.
But the five-year term.
Yes, but it could go seven or up to nine if we remained uh pleased and future councils decided to extend.
So we're locked in with them for five years?
Yes.
And then.
Well, I might add that our attorneys.
Oh, yeah.
Our attorneys always require that we have an out, that both parties have an out with reasonable notice. Some go silent. Well, so and first off, if you didn't appropriate funds to continue the contract going, technically you're out already because you can't have a multi-year physical commitment.
Five years could be a long time if you're not wanting to be in that agreement.
Yeah. Like I said, if the council decided not to appropriate funds to meet that contract, then the contract.
And I'm sorry, I'm getting off the original thing, but what is the price able to elevate with prices?
That's, that's us.
Okay.
Sorry.
I, I just wanted you to know that we, we do control the price.
Okay.
Um anything further? All right, roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Capel.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones. Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And uh Guy, before I move on, just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything further for us?
I just had one note. Um in my report, you, it was very heavy on the Housing Authority. Um you do have a representative, Capel and Mariani is your representative.
Yes.
So if you do give reports for me, it's more kind of the functional things of um like I talked about the RFP and everything, all the other decision-making, everything I'm, I'm going to leave to her as your representative.
Yeah, and thank you for sharing uh the good news, ninety-six thousand dollars. Uh a grant was awarded uh for the county, uh which of course we're all um you know, hoping to kick off the multi- jurisdictional housing authorities. So I want to say we had appropriated uh two hundred and ten thousand dollars the first year as a group of all municipalities. So this was nearly half. Uh so very, very welcome. All right. Uh thank you, Guy. I appreciate it. Uh Dylan, um got a very good staff report from you. And uh I just want to point out, uh April thirtieth, I, is it six P M. to eight P M.?
Yes, and it's just to drop in whenever you can, you know, stop and chat. There's not a set schedule for this comprehensive plan kickoff meeting, but it'll just be here from six to eight and everyone, welcome to stop by when they can.
All right, thank you. Did you have anything further for us?
Nothing else.
All right, well, thank you very much. And uh uh Wonder, uh did you have anything to share with us tonight?
No, Mayor, I do not.
Okay, and thank you for saving me uh with the water. Uh Chief, you're next up. Uh got a, a good report. Wanted to make sure you didn't have anything further to share.
Nothing further.
Thank you. And um uh public works, Paul, anything for us tonight?
Um our sweeper did break down. Uh we lost a mountain soul that's actually holds one of the motors for the, the the main brush in the middle. So that guy's going to be down. We had anticipated getting some more street sweeping done for downtown. Get this winter mess cleaned up, but uh it's going to probably be a couple of weeks before we get back.
And it did hold together long enough to do downtown?
Barely. We ended up uh finishing some of that with the skid steer and it's fresh.
Oh, boy. Okay, all right. Uh uh anything further?
Uh no, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh Ed, uh got your report, a good one as, as always. Wanted to see if you had anything further for us?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And um under uh mayor and council, I did not have anything for us tonight other than we are going to not have our next work session or regular meeting until May twelfth. Um so um does anybody have anything further they would like to share tonight before I adjourn?
No, Mayor. Um Mayor, yeah, just what Guy brought up about being on the Housing Authority. I don't know if you guys want formal updates for me or routine updates. I'm happy to like, I don't know, submit a report or something, but just let me know how you want to be communicated with about that. I'm happy to do whatever makes sense, so.
Well, Janine, you know, we are doing really well on time and I hate to put you on the spot, but uh just wanted to see, did, did you have any uh updates for us tonight? Anything come to mind?
No, I think what Guy put in his report are, are the big updates. So there's nothing additional.
All right, all right, very good. Uh anything uh from anyone else tonight? Well, I want to say thank you very much.